Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Danny will not be here tonight. Francois, you are here virtually.
Yes, I am.
Thank you, very loud and clear. Thank you, that's good. Everybody got their cell phones turned off? And everybody's got their mics on up here on the planning commission turned on? And if you snuggle up about four inches away, everybody will be able to hear you. First item on the agenda is review of the minutes from the December 1st, 2021 regular meeting. Any proposed changes? Looks okay. All right, gonna get a motion to approve those minutes. Got a first?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First case on tonight's agenda is a subdivision request by John Robert and Allison Yeeman to subdivide an existing 155.9 acres zoned A1 agriculture. The subdivision would create three new parcels and the residual parcel, the parcel would be 38 acres, 10 acres, 71 acres, and 32.8 acres. The subject parcel has not been subdivided in the last 10 years and the parcel is identified on the Madison County tax map as 63-10 and is located on the Jack Shop Road. To date, the parcel does not contain a postal address. Mr. Webb, do you have anything to add? We've already talked about this a couple of times.
Yep, we have everything in order. By right, hasn't been subdivided. Got the VDOT and Health Department and we're good to go.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Webb?
I have one question. There's a residual parcel of approximately 42 acres, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, is that what?
Okay.
Another question.
To repeat what I said, in addition to the three new parcels, there is a residue parcel of approximately 42 acres? I'm just doing the math, but I went to orange, so forgive me.
Thirty-eight, ten, does it say 42 on the? I see a 38, a 10, a 32. And I guess the residual would be 71 acres.
Okay.
So that's the one right in the middle.
Yeah, I'm not really sure which one you consider the residual. I mean, when the commissioner does the does the tax map numbers, one will, one of the parcels will stay, you know, this tax, but then usually the other ones get a A, B, and C depending on how the the residual will be 63-10 and then probably 63-10, A, B, and C.
Okay, fair enough. My only question.
Any other questions, Mr. Webb?
Look, and this was a tree farm, correct?
There, I think that's what I heard. There are a lot of trees on it. I think it was recently timbered, part of it. But there's still a lot of trees on it. But yes, I believe it was.
Was it any, in any kind of land use for pasture? Should have been.
Is the applicant here?
No, they were having power issues. I had to talk to them today. If you farm it, I guess you can, if they replant it or have some sort of plan, they can keep it in, in land use.
The Forest Service would, would have a forest management plan for that piece of property if it was in land use previously, which I strongly suspect that it was.
Right.
And if it was just timbered recently, they have a couple of years to get a new forest management plan to replant or whatever. If they don't, then things do change. I know that from personal experience. What?
The rezoned home effect?
Well, then that was just the subdivision. I mean, as long as they keep it in land use and it stays at least, I think, five acres you have to have, they can keep it in land use.
Whoever purchases, whoever purchases the new park can continue to keep it in land use. If they want, if it hasn't been replanted, they can do that and continue with their land use tax break. If they don't, I guess it's up to the county at that point. Any other questions for Mr. Webb, since the applicant is not here? Seems like a pretty clean, clear-cut case to mend subdivision. There are no more questions? Can I get a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, you may wish to ask for public comment.
Well, the applicant wasn't here, but anyone in the audience would like to comment on this? No comment, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I need reminding every now and then. Okay. Can I get a motion on which direction we want to go on this, as far as a recommendation to the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation, case number S-01-22-1. The recommended for approval as stated.
Okay.
Second?
Got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Francois. Okay.
Aye.
Next item. Is mine all right? Thank you. Next case is RZ-01-22-2, Abdul and Nanja, New Wombi. I hope I got that correct.
Close.
Thank you. Request to rezone a roughly five acre parcel from A1 agriculture to B1 business. If rezoned, the applicant intends to establish an automotive sales and repair and service business on the parcel. The parcel is identified on the Madison County tax map as 33-7C and is located on the North Seminole Trail. To date, the parcel does not contain a postal address. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Webb?
Yes, I'll just go over a couple of things on the application. You can see obviously where this is near Winery Drive. Piece of raw land. There's an M1 zoning near it. I think at one time and maybe some places here have been longer than me can just, I'm not really sure when that M1 piece was rezoned to M1. It seemed like there was some commercial use there that never has. I don't think there's any activity there that appears to be a residence. The subject parcel is the Wabes County, and of course their background is they have a car dealership, auto body, repair shop. And they're looking to purchase a piece of property. They do have a contract to purchase this if they can get the appropriate zoning. So I told them really from my perspective and looking at the application, that the only sort of obstacle, I believe, is just the entrance and having them understand that this could be, you know, a right turn lane. And I've spoken to VDOT, the Assistant Resident Engineer McAvoy. There's a new Assistant Resident Engineer now that we're working with. You saw the letter from VDOT, basically just states that the entrance has to meet VDOT design requirements. It doesn't say what. And what they recommend, recommended to VDOT is just that they, that the applicants retain an engineer. This is kind of normally how these things are done. Engineer would review the use, the road counts, the traffic counts on this road and would make a recommendation. It's not really based on the design of the building. I would think it would be, the amount of people coming in and out. Maybe that would be influenced by the number of bays you have, but really it's determined by the location of the entrance, where the site distance and the traffic. There's a lot of trips on this North Seminole Trail, but the good news, it's really just one way out, take a right out. And it's, it's excellent site distance, really can't get any much better. So VDOT basically says, get the engineer recommendation and that's what we would be comfortable with, VDOT. So right now, they have retained Marvin Henchy and even as of today, there's been a couple of back and forth emails between Marvin and VDOT and they're kind of working out. Marvin's initial recommendation is that a right turn lane would not be warranted. But again, they're sort of going back and forth and I think our role is to see, as the county, we ultimately have the decision on this. And as you can see from the profit letter, sat down with the Wabes and they're, they're basically, whatever we're going to require, they're going to do. And that would have been the case anyway, but in the profit letter, I think that's just clearly stated, that they understand that it's kind of out of their hands and what the engineer recommends and VDOT recommends is ultimately what will, will happen when they bring back a site plan if this is, is rezoned. Seven accidents at Winery Drive. I did ask Brian Gordon Day just to pull that, didn't put it in the report, but all relatively minor accidents since 20, in the last three years, beginning of 2018, 18, 19, 20. So not really an accident hotspot, but there have been a few accidents there. The only thing that is in our code that I guess, I talked to Sean, is that and Cardy found this and I appreciate it, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it, but Arpus 4-10-2 in 8-9-2 in A1 and B1 says that the center line of any entrance onto US Route 29 shall be 900 feet or more from the center line of any adjacent entrances. I won't read the rest of it, but that's something that's been in the code. I think Cardy said was put back maybe quite a while ago. My opinion of that is that's not a VDOT standard. That was something that was put in the county code. I'm not really sure the circumstances. There are numerous examples along 29 where their entrances, private entrances, commercial entrances that are much closer than 900 feet. My feeling is if we were talking about an A1 use, so they want to put a house there, there's really no way that we could say, and I feeling, I think Sean and Sean concurs, that the county could say, well, you can't put a house there because you're, you're 600 feet from the next entrance. That would be a taking of the property, in my opinion. So what we normally do is try to find the best location, collaborate with VDOT. Where would the best location for this entrance be? And then we kind of go with that. In this case, you are upzoning it. So they are going to, they're requesting to go to business. So I think it's a little bit different. We have a little more oversight. Generally speaking, I don't think there's anything dangerous about if it was a commercial interest there. Now whether or not there's a right turn lane is to be determined. But I do believe that this particular provision in our code is kind of, I don't want to call it arbitrary, but it's just something that I, I wasn't really aware of until it was, it was pointed out. And I don't think it's been something that has been enforced or something that's been, you know, sort of followed, at least for quite a while. Again, you can go up down 29 and see entrances that are much closer. My recommendation, if you're inclined to approve this, is that I would recommend that we amend this. I mean, I don't think we want to be in the habit of approving things that potentially would, that would be, kind of go against things that are in our code. I simply think that if we amended this in A1 and B1 to say something to the, to the effect of entrances access onto US 29 shall be determined in coordination between the county staff, VDOT, and a licensed engineer as deemed necessary. It's kind of what we do and what we've done, what other communities do. I think a hard 900 feet is kind of burdensome and what I really think, don't think it really would, would pass legal muster if somebody really went to challenge it. Now, moving forward with this, you know, I guess that kind of brings up the question, if you are inclined to approve this, you know, do you want to approve this? And I say conditionally because they offered to, you know, follow the recommendation as a condition. It's not a huge condition, but I think it's a, it's a condition to note. If, if we were to approve this, again, they are in a time sensitive situation for a contract. I don't want that necessarily to push the decision either way, but I do believe it's something that we could simply amend going forward, if not the next meeting, if that was the pleasure of the planning commission ultimately to afford. So any questions for me other than that? That's sort of, kind of all comes down to the entrance to me, but anyway.
When was this lot created? Do you know?
Uh, I think we determined that it was, I looked at it yesterday. This lot has been on the tax rolls since, as a five acre lot for since the eighties.
1980. And did VDOT have an approved entrance at that time?
I mean, we don't have any record of it. I mean.
No. Must have had something there.
I got some questions.
All right. Pete?
I got a couple of questions. The, the little building that's there, the reason that was M1, Carl Anderson had a paint and body shop there. And he opened that up to run as a paint and body shop and that's when they rezoned that to M1. But one of the reasons the nine foot thing existed, and maybe some of you here that remembers this, they determined, the board did at that time and the planning commission, that they didn't want to see entrances all over 29 up and down it. Every time you get to a business, be an entrance. And that was the reason that that was put in there. I do remember that. Not that I'm opposed to this. I'm glad to see a business come. But the problem that I got voting for this is if you're going to amend this now and then you're going to go change your ordinance, how far is that to the next guy? That's my only concern. I just want to be consistent with what we do. And I'm not against this proposal, this business.
Okay, I think we should keep in mind that this is a rezoning request. They have not filed any kind of special use permit or anything else at this time. It is strictly rezoning.
Yeah, that's, if I may add, that's one way to look at it is right now there is no permits for land disturbance or, you know, that. If this were to be approved, we'd still have the site plan. And if it was, and if it was the pleasure of the planning commission ultimately to afford to move forward and, and to potentially amend this portion of the code, I mean, that could certainly be done, you know, within a, you know, fairly short time period.
Well, that's something that would be down the road, but any other questions from the planning commission? Mr. Webb?
I have another comment.
Steve?
Kind of following along with what Pete just said. I think it's pretty clear what the intent of the board was when, when we made the 900 feet. They also made it clear in the ordinance that existing lots did not have to meet that. So it's a neat question right now. This lot was existing before then, it does not have to meet 900 foot. It says it's specific.
Thank you. Good point.
Just briefly on that, Mr. Carpenter's point. The concern I have is this is an upzoning. And again, we go back to, and you'll recall, we talked about, you know, the permissible uses, you know, things that are, I'm loathe to use, or grandfathered, but you know, non-conforming uses that have been approved. This is not a, an existing non-conforming use. This would be a new use. Candidly, I think the better way to proceed with this, rather than kind of doing it piecemeal, is if it is the will of the planning commission and ultimately the board, that the zoning ordinance be amended to, you know, use some of the language Mr. Webb suggested as it relates to, you know, having VDOT approval for these entrances and that sort of thing. I think that's a better way of approving that. Approving an upzoning without having that, we could have an approved upzoning, but the applicant would still be running afoul of our zoning ordinance as it relates to the entrance on Route 29. It's just a matter of order, for lack of a better term. I'm not certain that this would, would create any undue hardship on the applicant. And the reason I say that is because conceivably, the planning commission and the board could review this, amend the ordinance, and approve this application, you know, in relatively short order. I don't know if they could do it at the next meeting, but they could certainly do it relatively quickly.
As far as the planning commission getting involved in rewriting that particular part of the ordinance, if that's what the board of supervisors wanted the planning commission to do, then so be it. But it's up to them to tell us they want us to do that.
I understand.
Okay. That's where that is. Peter?
It strikes me, Ligon, this, that the question of how far, what distance there ought to be between entrances is really well beyond our expertise as a planning commission. And whether we defer to to VDOT on a case-by-case basis or we ask VDOT to establish a standard separation going forward. I think that's a question that ought to be discussed with VDOT. But I don't, I don't think that the planning commission as such ought to get involved in deciding on a case-by-case basis what the distance between entrances should be, because we did not have that expertise.
Well, that would be, Peter, up to the board of supervisors to decide whether they want the planning commission to.
I understand. I understand.
Mr. Pete?
Maybe I can ask Cardy. Cardy, when you read this whole thing, and I apologize, I have not read it and maybe Ligon has read it, isn't there something in that same part of that ordinance for hardship case?
Or I thought it was something about every lot is, cannot, a lot cannot be, it's got, it has to have an access.
Still give them the access without having a ton of them.
Right, but just think that it has to be 900 feet between each entrance.
It seems like to me that I remember reading once upon a time that there was a hardship. If there was rock where you couldn't work. If there was different things in there, if you couldn't make it work and two properties and not, like man said, not the landlocked somebody, something. I don't remember what it said exactly, but I seem like I remember something being in there, a hardship case.
Right.
There it goes, it says, and provided further that the effort said distance between entrances may be decreased to the point of the nearest relief upon application for a special use permit. You know, and it says here finds it exceptional topographical conditions such as rock formations or floodplain areas justified to decrease. So that's in there, but it says during a special, like a, you know, a special use, you could, you know, if it was a special use application.
Is that something this would qualify under, Sean?
I don't think, I don't, it's not really what is described in terms of rock or something like that. I mean, it's just saying the ordinance is requires too much. I'm not certain that that would necessarily apply. What was the ordinance number again? It's 4-10-1, 4-10-
The planning commission to look and redoing this. These are all things that can be discussed and beat up on or whatever at that time. But right now, I'd say again, this is strictly a application to rezone and we don't have the other issues before us at this time and there is enough, potential for a special use application down the road if necessary. But we sit here all night and talk about the entrance to this thing, but the application itself is for rezoning. Anybody else?
If I might, while Sean is looking this up. I looked at A1, the residential and the, the wording is identical in all of them as far as that 900 foot. So it's not, it's not upzoning something and changing something. It's all the same. So I don't see why we need to consider amending something where all of the zoning districts are the same.
Well, all of them would have to be amended. Not just one.
Anything that was already in existence in 1990 is already taken care of. And intent was not to have new things back when you invited that. Unless we want to change that intent. Which I'm not sure we do.
Mr. Chairman, if in fact this subdivision was approved prior to June 20th of 1990, it does say that each parcel would, that fronts on US Route 29, which this certainly does, would be permitted to have at least one such entrance, but it doesn't really say, I'm not sure what one such entrance means. I think it just means any entrance. That would be my guess. And if that's the case, maybe we don't have a problem. You know, in terms of recommending approval.
Right.
But it necessarily depends on when that subdivision, whenever that parcel was.
1980.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned earlier, there was an existing entrance approved at that time.
Mr. Chairman, could, could, and I guess Ligon, Sean, could just be approved with the understanding that these folks know that if it comes back to where it's got to be that, they're understanding that now?
Well, they understand that, I mean, this issue to me, I mean, I know we've talked about it a lot here, but I mean, you can go from Culpeper to Charlottesville, multi-counties and see entrances, private and commercials that don't, you know, each one's kind of reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So I don't have any issue- So I don't have any issue with an approval with what they have, with, now reading this and seeing that it probably does to a certain degree state that they can't have an access. I don't see any issue with approving this with the simple proffer that they have made that they're going to work with an engineer and VDOT to establish an appropriate entrance.
Okay.
If we want to look in the future about admitting this and maybe making it a little more clear, that's fine, but...
Any other questions, Mr. Webb?
Yeah, just one, Mike. So just, just understand your position, Ligon. Do you think the question of separation of entrances is even at issue in connection with this rezoning application?
I think there's ample, engineering, planning, there's ample distance, site distance. And in the case of the design of this entrance, I mean, traffic data, everything, you know, something that really jumps out as far as the actual design of the entrance, it's kind of going to be up to a traffic engineer.
That really wasn't my question. My question was, is the only issue before us, an issue of rezoning, and that the question of separation of entrances, and where the entrance ought to be, and whether there ought to be a turnoff lane, that that's for the future? That the only issue before us tonight is rezoning? Is that right?
Yeah, but I don't think you can, if you're going to rezone it, I think you need to look at those issues as well. I mean, I think they have to be part of, you know, at least for me, it'd be part of...
But you don't have to resolve them.
But I don't, no, they don't, they will be resolved, you know, as we work with the engineer and VDOT to...
Would the applicant have anything to say on this? Okay, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Webb? If not...
Mr. Weekly, I'm not sure yet. Let me, I'm looking for what the regulations say with regard to commercial uses. Hang on just a second.
Mike, and I don't know if this is possible, but with Mr. Anderson having an M1 zoning already, he has a commercial entrance. If Mr. Anderson would allow these folks to come in his entrance, we probably solve this problem, not tonight, though.
Mr. Weekly, to respond to your question, I do not have any other questions. I believe Mr. Carpenter's correct. The language in 8-9-2 is comparable to the language in Section 4 with regard to the entrance's distance. So based on that, I think that they are entitled to it under agriculture, and because it is paralleled under the commercial or business entrances, I do not think it runs afoul of the existing ordinance.
I agree. All right, anybody else? Anybody from the audience like to jump in? If not, can I get a recommendation from the planning commission to the board of supervisors?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we recommend case number RZ01-22-2 for approval by the planning commission.
I got it first?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. We got a recommendation. All right. Next item on the agenda, case number RZ01-22-3. Madison County Holdings LLC, Paolo Bannon, requests rezoning a roughly three acre and nine acre portion of an R1 zone parcel to B1 business, and R3 multiple family residential, respectively. If rezoned, the applicant would develop a commercial site on the B1 zone area and multiple apartment building structures containing no more than 35 individual apartment units on the R3 zone area. The subject 39 acre property is defined, identified on Madison County Tax Map 40-20 and is located on Fishback Road. To date, the parcel does not contain a postal address. I think just about everybody here on the planning commission, they knows exactly where this piece of property is. Mr. Webb, you have anything you would like to add to this application, the rezoning?
I just put this, Mr. Barry just put this up here, just to show this 39 acre property, you get A, B, and C there. So A, as you recall, was back in, I guess it was August, we approved A to M1 with conditions with the, that will just be used for many storage units. B is the nine, roughly nine acres, and that would be the apartments. Mr. Bannon is proposing, and I know that we've seen the site plan, and since we've been talking about this with those that were here, at least since May or June of this year, and then C is the B1, is the proposed B1. And just to note, there are conditions on A. Of course, that's limited to many storage units, and there are conditions on C, the business portion. And basically, if you look at what has been proffered by Mr. Bannon, he's looking for pretty much a retail, maybe a shopping type center, some sort of a, maybe a grocery place. It's a minor proffer, but one of the also things that was agreed to is that the signage would be a monument style sign, not a large whole sign that you can see from 29. It's minor, I think it's kind of a nice touch. Overall, on this site, what we have kind of going on here, we do this kind of piecemeal rezonings, is we basically have what is, what's potentially could be, what as I see it, and I think Mr. Bannon does too, is a mixed use property. The limitations on the apartments, as you can see from the letter from RSA, it was required in R3 is you have to have public water and sewer there. It does have the 22 connections for sewer, with 21 of them would be dedicated for, you know, for the apartments. And basically, a one-bedroom apartment, apartment, basically is what it is, one-bedroom apartment according to RSA is .6. A two-bedroom apartment would be a .75, and a three-bedroom apartment would be one TAP or EDU. So that's sort of the limiting sort of qualification on the apartments, you know, any combination thereof not to exceed those number of EDUs. You want to do several three bedrooms and a one bedroom, but again, it's going to have to go to that math that has been set out by RSA on that. I did take a stab, just kind of showing how this site could potentially be developed, and I think Mr. Bannon is open-minded to it. It's not a proffer or anything, but I just wanted to see, to show the planning commission and the board of supervisors sort of how this could be connected. I think it's important that B and C, the commercial and the apartments be connected. We also have a, you know, a road that's proposed, the timing of when that road, that service road, you know, is paved and whatnot, turn lanes potentially on Fishback Road, maybe improvements to intersection of Fishback and 29, which is already signalized, so I don't know what improvements could really be done else there. But these can be things that would be addressed when we get a site plan before we get into the engineering. I hope that, you know, I would have some input into sort of maybe some of the, some of the design of it. But this whole corridor on Fishback Road, I mean, Madison Holdings, i.e. Mr. Bannon, they have another, is it 80 acres just to the south of this? This is identified as a growth area, and I think it makes sense that we have a commercial element, for people that live in that potential neighborhood could go to and go to the store and have to get on 29, so I think it makes sense. But again, this area should be a growth area, is logical for a growth area. I think the only thing that really is limiting it is, as far as having some density, would be the availability of sewer and water. I know water's a little easier to achieve, but right now, I don't want to get too off on a sidebar, but I think RSA is studying the capacity, and that's supposed to be that report. I'm waiting on it to see exactly where we are. This is very convenient, this whole corridor on Fishback is very convenient for sewer, but again, kind of waiting for that report, which I think is supposed to be due here next month or so. Other than that, this is all very preliminary. We do have a sit-down with Mr. Bannon, and he's been very good to work with. You know, we sat down and went over a sort of a, if you see in the letter, a list of conditions that would be binding to the site, that would sort of guide the development. But again, I suspect when it gets down to the kind of the heavy lifting that can happen in the design and connections, interparcial connections, and when the road will be built, that's something that we can, we can really sort of focus on when we get to the, to the specific site plans.
Any questions for Mr. Webb?
I don't really have any questions, maybe a statement. I've lived on this road and traveled this road to get to when I lived at home and to my house, and a long time ago, when I was a little fella, I can remember when that was a gravel road and it was a forge area, and you crossed where that creek was across the forge. And when they came in and rebuilt this road, I think it's probably 50 years or so ago, and Mr. Bannon can probably speak to this, but I talked with Jimmy Clor, that was a resident engineer at Madison Highway, and he told me that when they built that road through there, that they put three commercial entrances in there for this property. Now, they've grown up since because they never used it, and he might can speak more to this, but I remember that gravel road being there, and I remember putting those entrances in there, and Mr. Bannon has had this property for roughly 50 years. And in 50 years, he told me that he thought maybe roughly his taxes was $4,000, $5,000 a year. That's $200,000 with no return. This piece of property right here is probably one of the most developed piece of properties that should be developed by the county and the whole entire county. There's water, there's sewer, there's access. I mean, it's got what you're looking for. I just think this is a, this is a real good proposal.
Thank you, Pete. Any other comments from the planning commission? If not, to the applicants, Mr. Bannon, you have anything you would like to add? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Bannon of the planning commission? Anyone in the audience have anything they want to comment? Yes?
I've already talked to Mr. Bannon, saying I'm not in favor of this, so that was full disclosure. I'm Eleanor Montgomery, and I live in Malvern, and I understand that six of the 39 acres on Fishback Road have been approved for storage units, and has VDOT performed a feasibility study for the proposed storage units, and where will the entrance to the storage units be? I'm basing the rest of my comments on the notice about the public hearing found in the Madison Eagle that concerns the rezoning on Fishback Road. From reading the notice in the newspaper, I've learned that three acres will be commercial and nine acres will contain up to 35 apartments. I have concerns about rezoning this property. Was the public hearing notice incomplete? I ask this because six acres for storage units, three plus three acres for commercial, plus nine acres for apartments, doesn't add up to 39 acres, yet the public notice states it is a 39 acre property. What is going to happen to the other 21 acres on that property? The remaining 21 acres are zoned R1 to find a single unit residential, R1 single unit residential zoning district. The R1 zoning district is intended to provide for areas appropriate for a range of, range of detached, single-family residential dwelling units, each located on a single legal lot and does not include condominiums or cooperative housing. This information makes me wonder if Madison Holding, Madison County Holdings LLC is planning to come back at a later date with another rezoning application, or are they planning to build single-family homes on the 21 acres? I travel Fishback Road often. It is narrow, curvy road with steep hills and is heavily traveled. If the proposed building takes place, traffic on Fishback Road will increase, possibly creating safety issues. Has VDOT performed a feasibility study for proposed additional development on Fishback Road, and where will the entrance onto the property be located? Three of the acres are, will be zoned commercial. What commercial business or businesses will be in those three acres? Will there be, will there be one business or more than one, and what kind of business or businesses will be there? And Ligon mentioned some of it today. Nine of the acres will be multiple family residential. According to the notice in the paper, this portion will have up to 35 apartments. How large are the apartments? How many people will each apartment accommodate? Will the apartments fall under HUD Section A, providing housing for very low-income families? Are the apartments intended for the 55 and older population? And how many parking spaces will be allowed for each unit? And I urge you to consider ramifications of approving the rezoning application before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Montgomery? Ligon?
I'll say the acreage is 39, and the balance, the 21 acres, I mean, if you add it up, you know, the nine, the six, three, and the 21, that's 39 acres. I forget the other questions, there's so many. You know, VDOT will review this, and there's a letter from VDOT, and I've talked to them, you know, until they, we get a site plan and have a, you know, sort of a concrete plan to review, then they will make their, they'll make their recommendations to us. I think it's a fair question to say, if you're rezoning it and you don't specifically have a, you know, a super specific plan at this moment, that's a fair question. But I think what Pete says, at this point, this is an R1 zone parcel. It could be developed tomorrow for housing, at least move forward with the process. I personally haven't been in situations like this in rezonings. I believe what has been written in this proffer letter, what we have as far as what can go on the B1 parcel, we know this is going to be limited to a retail type, and that's part of the proffer. I think it makes sense that some sort of retail use goes there, potentially offices, but that's, that's probably giving office space demand right now, it's probably not going to be practical. But I mean, just, again, what's been sort of given to us and what's been proffered is some sort of a retail, a, I don't want to say strip mall, but something to that effect. And the impacts on traffic at that time will be reviewed, and again, I mean, it could require turn lanes, it could require some improvements at the intersection of 29, and that's something that we need to be prepared. I think the applicant understands that it could have to be done. But as generally broad brush, I think this being B1, the apartments as far as who lives there, I mean, we don't, we don't really have any control over that, I don't believe. I mean, they're going to be market rate apartments, and whether there'll be 35 single ones or not, in the R3 ordinance, we have very specific requirements on open space, density, and honestly, with 35 units being three to five buildings on nine acres, that's not for apartments, that's not particularly a very dense development. Buffering, you're against the interstate, so from a planning perspective, I'm comfortable with the way the proffers are written and what we've gotten from the applicant, and realizing that we're going to get into a deeper, sort of go to the next layer, once we come back with the site plan, and then that's where really, you know, we can sort of, the planning commission and ultimately the board can decide what they're going to require as far as, and again, the road is, the road that's proposed is pretty much, I believe, where that entrance is. believe, where that entrance is now, to go back to the sewer plant, that would be improved. You know, it most likely would be just a gravelled, improved right-of-way drive for the storage spaces. And VDOT did comment on the storage space, and their, and their comment on the storage spaces, there's really not too many commercial uses that generate, it's not a high-generating traffic use storage. But I think that's going to be the first piece that comes in as a storage. But we're very clear that that road will be improved, paved at some point, and I would imagine it will be when the site plan comes in for the, for the apartments.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else from the public? Comments, whatever? Any other questions, comments from the planning commission?
I guess I have one more question. I think Ms. Montgomery asked a fair question. We're talking about a 39-acre piece of property that we want to rezone, and we can't tell from what you presented us, what's going to happen with 21 of those 39 acres?
Well, the 21 would remain R1. So in theory, like the little conceptual site plan that I put together, I mean, in theory, the balance of the property could be, you know, a minimum R1, $15,000, I forget what exactly the, I saw acre and a half, you know, for non-public water and sewer. So that could happen, but honestly, the way, maybe Mr. O'Bannon can talk to this, when you look at the D part, sort of where it kind of angles, I would imagine that's just going to be a buffer at the very back. Now, directly to the south, that's still zoned R1, and if you, you might go with that little side plan, and again, this was just my ideas, but I don't think I'm probably too far. If you put a road in there, and you can see, keeping the lot lines there to the south of that road, I mean, if that's, I think I estimated that that's 21 acres, I think that's probably somewhere around 10 or 11 acres. I mean, in theory, by right, could put several one-and-a-half-acre lots there, if that's, if that's, again, that's, that is by right, so. And then if you notice, you come down from there, you keep going south, I mean, that's all zoned R1. Okay, all the way down Fishback Road. So, planning-wise, I just think it's important to look at this and how does it connect? And I talked to Supervisor Jewett today about this, and I know I've talked about this in the past. You know, it's important that we think about this, and that's why I want to put something out there, we think about this whole core, you've got another 70 acres across the street that's part of it zoned R1. It is truly going to be residential growth in Madison, I think this is where it's going to be. And aside, you know, I've talked about maybe a master plan ordinance being adopted, maybe that's something we can talk about in the future, but I think I forgot what the question, the rest of it is, again, this is rezoning of portions of a 39-acre property, the parts that stay R1, could definitely bring a site plan in, a subdivision, to develop those housing. But again, I don't think that very end part is really going to be viable.
But the remaining 21 acres will stay the same?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions from planning commission, comments? If not, can I get a motion to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors on this rezoning case?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that case number RZ-01-22-3 be recommended to the board of supervisors for approval.
Got it first? I got second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Francois?
Aye.
Thank you. Excuse me, y'all might want to stick around to the board of supervisors has to make the system. I got, I got this, I got this, I got this. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Yes, please stick around. We got two items here, D and E, which are related, and this is not something that the planning commission has worked on, so I'm kind of confused about it, but anyhow. Case number 0A-01-22-4, amending the zoning ordinance specifically adding an article 20-101B, which is a definition listed as housing temporary. This article will define the temporary housing as temporary occupancy of an RV, which is a recreational vehicle, meeting the National Fire Protection Association standards. While a parcel's principal dwelling is under construction or necessary due for, due to unforeseen emergencies or medical hardship. Occupancy may be allowable for up to 24 months, requiring adherence to the Virginia Department of Health Regulations, and must adhere to Article B-1 Temporary Housing and Zoning Ordinance. Now, this is a definition of what would be considered temporary housing, and would be in Article 20. And right now, the definition that is drafted up for proposal, or for recommend, for the board to sign up on, says Article 20-101B, Housing Temporary, the temporary occupancy of an RV, recreational vehicle, meeting the National Fire Code Protection Association standards. Then it goes on to explain while a parcel's principal dwelling is under construction or in a necessary due to unforeseen emergencies or medical hardship. Occupancy may be allowed up to 24 months, requires adherence to the Virginia Department of Health Regulation, and must adhere to Article 15B, Temporary Housing, of those zoning ordinance. Any questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, I have a question. Should I address it to Lignan?
Yes, I think he's the one drafting this.
Where you say "may be allowable," "may be allowable" by whom?
Is that in the definition?
Yeah, I just, this is, I think it's taken from Orange County, I mean, allowable by the county, i.e. zoning administrator.
Shouldn't it say that?
Peter? We're only talking about the definition at this point, as stated here. And that doesn't, okay, it does have the 24 months in it, I'm sorry. Okay. Obviously, may be allowed up to 24 months. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, it could. I mean, I think this was a definition that one locality, I forget which, you know, which locality uses, and I just sort of borrowed it, but if you want to put maybe allowable by the zoning administrator from that, that's fine.
Perhaps could improve upon that wording, so "may be allowable" is a pretty nebulous concept.
Well, every case is a little different, like, I think right now we have about five folks that are living in RVs with their houses under construction, which is quite a, quite a few, but, and part of the reason behind it is, I think a lot of people are just having a hard time finding temporary residence outside of hotels, so.
I understand the reason for it, and I think it's a justifiable reason, but I'm just talking about the wording of this, which could be read by different folks in different ways.
It doesn't seem vague if you combine it with the next five words altogether, it loses some of its thickness.
Still doesn't say "may be allowable by whom."
Occupancy may be allowed for up to 24 months.
Yeah, I think it may be allowed by the zoning administrator, not "may be allowable," but "may be allowed, maybe, may be allowed upon application by the zoning administrator." But I think this wording can be improved upon.
Any other comments? This is a definition, proposed definition. I have to agree with Peter, I don't quite understand the definition. I understand the definition of temporary occupancy of an RV, meeting such, such standards, okay? All the other stuff is explained, again, in the following case number and proposed ordinance. So here we have in a definition, a lot of explanation of what this recreational vehicle definition is going to stand for, so we really have, to me, a lot of unnecessary wording in that I don't know that the definition needs all that, plus, we don't have a, we have a definition of housing temporary, but we don't have a definition of what a recreational vehicle is, which there are kind of different definitions of recreational vehicle, perhaps it would be good if we also had a definition of a recreational vehicle, so everybody knows exactly what it is we're talking about. We're talking about motorhomes, which I think is what some people define as a recreational vehicle, but not necessarily. So to me, I think the definition could be improved on. Any other comments?
The instances that you know of, it's the owner living in the RV on their property while their house is being, so.
Or?
I mean, that's, that's the only clarification that might be needed, I mean, I think it's understood, but.
But all that stuff is explained later, of what the, the temporary housing and RV thing is talking about. All we need is a definition of what it is, not an explanation of, and how long it's good for, and that type of stuff, that is explained later in the rest of the proposed ordinance that goes, that is proposed in Article 15. So to me, the definition is kind of long unnecessarily, but that's just my opinion. So, it's just a definition. Any other comments?
I guess I got one question to ask, and this probably don't affect this, but I'd still like to ask the question. Let's say I go tomorrow, if you pass this, and I buy a RV and park it in my driveway, and a month from now, my neighbor calls up and says he's got a RV parked over there, he's using, he's working on stuff. I just got my RV for vacation, a vacation use only. Is that going to have any impact on this?
Well, either that discussion may be in the next case number, Pete. So, just dealing with the definition. Keeping things in perspective here and focused. Anybody else on the planning commission, any comments? Anybody in the audience have any comments on this? If not, can I get a recommendation here from the planning commission? One wants?
Well, I guess the question I want to ask, maybe Sean, or you might, how do you approve the definition without approving the ordinance that you're going to have the definition for?
Well, if you go through Article 20, you think you might find a few definitions in there that are no longer applicable. When we went through a lot of this stuff, Mike Fisher, Peter Work and I, a couple of years ago, with recommendations on how to improve the ordinance, we found quite a few unnecessary things, duplications, things that no longer apply, so. But I agree, this is, this should be all one thing.
I would be more inclined for it to be all one than I would be to approve the definition than I having approved the ordinance.
Okay.
That's just me.
All right, good point.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address Mr. Elliott's comments. It is not fatal if you have a definition that has no bearing on the rest of the ordinances. Having said that, I understand the wisdom of Mr. Elliott's comment.
Yep.
I want, could I make a comment, please?
Just say.
Having been, having observed a lot of the housing in our areas, that I didn't understand at the time, why certain people were living where they were, eventually, maybe in one case that I know of, with an RV there for many months, wondering what was going on, and found out finally they dug the basement and, you know, started the, the construction of a home, which at the time, none of us knew, just riding past and seeing this happen for months and months and months. So I think it's extremely necessary to have something like this temporary housing thing to prevent exactly what I was having a problem with. And I know there are other places, too, and temporary can become permanent quite easily if you don't have something, and then the permanent, you know, we don't have any control, we don't know what it is, we haven't, I mean, you know, same issue with house trailers, for instance, which, how do we, you know, we've handled that. I do think we need something. It does say while the parcel's principal dwelling, while a parcel's principal dwelling is under construction, that puts it on the owner, I would say, of, they have to be, when they're living in it, it has to be they're building something permanently, that will abide by all the codes, you know, then they have the health department thing with the proper.
But all of that, Fay, is explained later on in this other.
Well, I don't have a problem having a, have a definition, but, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't quibble over that. I'd hate to think that this would fall because we don't like the definition. I guess that's my point.
I don't think anybody has said they have a problem with what is being proposed here. Okay? There's no problem there that I have heard anybody voice an opinion on that. The only thing I'm hearing is that they have a problem with the way the definition is, was written, so.
I would just say, we have a definition with basically supplemental regulations, and that's what Orange has and other communities have, so it's pretty common, if you have supplemental regulations, you also kind of give a, give a brief definition. Again, this is a definition that I forget the community, but another community uses, you know, if you want to put zoning administrator in it, or tweak it a little bit before you make a motion, that's fine.
Well, I would propose, and we would make a motion, but it's proposed on this on my part, and I'm hoping somebody else will make a motion, that we just cut off the definition and say housing temporary, the temporary occupancy of a recreational vehicle meeting the National Fire Protection standards, period. Because all this other stuff is explained in the second part of this proposed ordinance change in the next case. So that's where I'm coming from. Otherwise, I have no problem with this. It's just duplication on something that's not necessary.
Sean, if we change it that much from what was advertised, would, could you do that?
It's not going to change anything at all.
Based on what you've said, I don't think that this varies what was advertised. I think you're okay.
All right. Could I get a motion? On that respect? With just a simple definition? One wants?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that case number 04-01-22-4 be recommended to the board of supervisors as we received it.
As what, Pete?
As we received it.
Okay, I got it first?
I'll second it.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Francois? Are you there? Francois is not there. Peter, did you vote?
Sorry, I wasn't.
Yes, Francois? Yes, Francois?
I abstain.
She abstained?
She abstained.
She abstained, is that?
Yes. Thank you. I'm going to abstain too. I think we have a majority on that.
So Pete was yes, Fay was yes, Nathan, yes, Steve, yes, you, Mike?
No.
No, uh, yes. So one, two, three, four, five?
That's majority.
Five ayes.
Okay. Recommendation to the board is as proposed. Moving on. Case number 0A-01-22-5, amend the zoning ordinance specifically adding an Article 15B to the, to be listed as temporary housing. This Article 15B temporary housing will include Article 15B1, temporary emergency housing, 15B2, temporary housing during new construction, 15B3, medical emergency housing, and 15B4, additional regulations in consideration. Each article contains a written description. And I'm sure everyone has read those. Mr. Webb, since you're the author, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, thi- this did come from March County, it was just a very small tweaks that I made. But again, it, it's, it's honestly probably more verbose than I would generally like, but I guess if we're going to do this, we might as well turn over a rock. It's very thorough. Nothing wrong with that, but that's about all I have to add.
Planning Commission, comments, questions, observations? Well, I'll start off. Okay. First off, as I said before, Article 15 is specifically for campgrounds. What we're talking about here is not a campground. To me, if you want to put something in the ordinance, it should be in the section where it is more appropriate, and that would be in C1, A1, or R1, 2, and 3, I think, is what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about a campground here. So to me, this is misplaced. It has nothing to do with campgrounds. The, uh, like I said, there's no definition of a RV, plus there's, but there's no definition for a mobile home either, and mobile homes are not so mentioned in the ordinance. One of the things that jumps out to me, there's several of them here, is you want, one of the requirements is you have to remove this RV within 30 days after, for example, construction of the new home. If you go out and buy an RV because you can't find affordable housing while your home is being built, I, and I do, I think I'm reading this right, it says that the RV has to be removed in all cases. But if you go out and buy an RV and you have it on your property, I don't, I have a problem with the way this is worded as far as having to remove the RV. That's not, I just don't understand that. In here, it refers numerous times to a zoning administrator. Madison County does not have a zoning administrator. And this thing about the RVs has to meet building codes, I think when RVs are built or constructed, they have to meet certain standards right there. There's things throughout here that, a lot of them, I can't discuss them all here tonight, but one of them here is, uh, under the 15B2, temporary housing during construction, that I don't understand, says the permissible, this is permissible providing the existing dwelling and proposed new dwelling are both located on the same lot. I don't understand what the existing dwelling is and proposed new dwelling being on the same lot. If you've got a house there already, or you live in it, or what are you doing? That statement, I just don't understand. And like I said, 30-day requirements in its each, in each one of these things, the 15B3, 15B4, uh, you know, it just goes on and on. This is not anything that the planning commission was ever involved in. We did not vet it. I think if we had, the thing would have been substantially shorter, because I think you could combine the 15B2, 3, and 4 into a much shorter version of what is being proposed here. I have absolutely no problem with what is being proposed as far as the need, because I have noticed these same, same things throughout the county ever since I've been here. But the way this is written, to me, it's, it's confusing. I think some of the things have been changed, like the temporary housing shall be completely removed within six, 30 days, whatever, I understand that's been fixed. But, you know, it just seems like to me, there's just some confusing stuff in here that needs to be ironed out. So that's what I see. Anybody else?
My comment.
Peter?
I think this is true with both of these. I would hope that the board would refer them to the planning commission and, and let us work on them, because I think they could, both of these can be improved.
Anyone else?
I agree with Peter. I think this is probably something that's needed, but it needs to be clarified a great deal.
This is kind of what I, my opinion of it. I think it's definitely something needed to be, it needs, a need for, but I think, excuse me, if the Board of Supervisors wanted us to work on this, they would have told us.
Agreed. That's one of the reasons I'm kind of confused, what is, why it's even on our agenda since we didn't work on it, but that's beside the case. Anybody else on the planning commission?
But at the same time, if the Board of Supervisors told Lagan, presented something, he's did his job.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? If not, can I get a recommendation on what you want to recommend to the Board of Supervisors on this?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that case number 08-01-22-5 be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
I got a first? Second? I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Francois?
Opposed.
What?
She said opposed.
Opposed? Okay. I got two. All recommend and approval? All opposed, say aye?
Aye.
It does not appear that this case would be recommended by the planning commission to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Moving on. Next case on the agenda. And these are something else we've been working on for a while. Case number 08-01-22-6, amend the code of ordinance of Madison County, Virginia, specifically Chapter 4, amusement and entertainment, and deleting Article 2, outdoor musical entertainment festivals, Section 4-19 through 4-29. All text in Article 3 and Sections 4-19 through 4-29 shall be replaced with the word reserved. Further, amending the code of ordinance of Madison County, Virginia, specifically Chapter 4, amusement and entertainment, and delete amusement and entertainment and replace the text with Chapter 4 to read Chapter 4, large-scale outdoor events. The entire amendment, amended Chapter 4, large-scale events shall consist of an Article 1, general, and contain Sections 1 through 11. We have, everybody on the planning commission has seen all of this, gone through it numerous times. I don't think it's pretty clear at this time, but that's just my opinion. Any comments on this?
Mr. Chairman, whenever you're ready for a motion, we beat this up till it can't be beaten anymore. I'll better make it.
Anybody else? Agree with Pete? Anybody from the audience who want to jump in? If not, can I get a motion to approve? This change?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve case number 08-01-22-6 recommended to the Board for approval.
Second. Got a first and a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Francois?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay. Moving on. Case number 08-01-22-7, amend the zoning ordinance specifically amending Article 1418, event venue, and deleting the entire text of the last paragraph to Article 1418.2, structures and activities to be allowed. This amended portion of Article 14-18-2 shall read, large-scale outdoor events that are open to the public are subject to the requirements of the code of ordinance of Madison County, Chapter 4, large-scale outdoor events. Okay. We've been. Pete?
I'm going to make a motion. I don't want to discuss this.
Okay. Honestly, we have beat this up enough. Can I get a motion to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisor on this?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that case number 08-01-22-7 be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Mr. Chairman, before we take any further action, did we ask the general public for a comment?
Yes. General public comments, anybody in the audience? Please jump in.
Sorry, thought that.
That's okay, Mr. Gregg, thank you. Like I say, I forget sometimes, get excited. Okay, I got a first. Got a second?
A second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's one.
Aye, sorry, I was making.
Thank you. All opposed? Obviously, no one? Thank you very much. There is, was an additional item that had to do with reef activities that did not get included, but it's my understanding it will be on the, advertised and on the agenda in the near future. So.
Well, I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, exercising abundance of caution, it may be appropriate, I just don't remember whether we did, to ask whether the public had any comment on items number 08-01-22-4, 08-01-22-5, and 08-01-22-6. I do remember that we had comment from the, that we asked for that previously.
Just in case I didn't, I thought I did. Just in case.
You may have, I just don't specifically recall.
Anybody in the audience? Please, don't be shy. Okay. Thank you. Stick around after we adjourn, and the Board of Supervisors will make a, make the final decisions. Ours are just recommendations. Anybody else in the planning commission got anything to say? Tonight? Yes.
Yes, I understand that, but, you know, this, there's a lot of things in the ordinance where we make things as we just discussed tonight, that are improper statements or wording or whatever, not just trying to keep everything clean is the whole purpose.
Well, I might also say along those lines that the, the ordinance that we just recommended also refers to the zoning administrator.
We messed up?
And by that, my, my understanding has been that Lagan occupies the position of planner and occupies the position of zoning administrator.
But it is not in the job description, so I'm just trying to stick with what's actually specific or according to what all the titles are. Anyhow, that's just my opinion. Anybody else? Not, can I get a motion to adjourn? Before I do that, next meeting, Nathan will be making, in his committee, will be stepping up with the assistance of Mr. Sean Gregg to nominate new officers for the planning commission in the future. So everyone, please be here. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Got a first?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Everybody travel home safely.
I would like to say have a brief moment of silence for the 1982 fireworks and event ordinance. I'm sorry, was it 82?
I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors, portion of this meeting to order. We do have a forum, we do need to adopt an agenda. Anybody have anything we need to add to the agenda this evening? Let's pleasure the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing known on, favor signal five, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. As always, let's start with generalized public comment. Generalized public comment. All right, moving on. Case number S-01-22-1, a subdivision request by John Robert and Allison Yaman to subdivide an existing 155.9 acres of A1 agriculture zone parcel. The subdivision would create three new parcels and a residual parcel. The parcels would be 38 acres, 10 acres, 71 acres, and 32.8 acres. The subject parcel has not, has not been subdivided in the last 10 years. The parcel is identified as Madison County tax map as 63-10 and is located on Jack Shop Road. To date, the parcel does not contain a postal address. Mr. Webb, anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Webb? The applicant isn't here. To the public. To the public. All right, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number S-01-22-1.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing known on, favor signal five, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Case number RZ-01-22-2, Abdul and, I apologize, Najah Nawabi, requests to rezone a roughly five-acre parcel from A1 agriculture to B1 business. If rezoned, the applicant intends to establish an automotive sales, repair, and service, servicing business on the parcel. The parcel is identified as Matt, on Madison County tax map as 33-7C and is located on North Seminole Trail. To date, the parcel does not contain a postal address. Mr. Webb, anything we need to go through?
Yeah, I, I think it sounds as if on, if it was resoned to B1, that, that the code that talks about the 900 feet, it seems as if it's identical language. And if understood correctly, given this was created before 1990.
It would seem that the 1990s of enacting this ordinance, we go back to grandfathering. And as you, Sean Gregg, described to us about grandfathering recently, it is legislative discretion.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. In this particular case, the ordinance actually provides for, and specifically provides that these entrances are in fact permissible without the 900-foot restriction.
All right, further comments?
Yeah, real quick, I, I did check with a prior county zoning administrator, this, this lot was created long before the ordinance. When I called about that, she remembered specifically the whole thing. The ordinance was a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors way back in, in the 80s by Larry Garber, who was a VDOT engineer at the time. And I asked her, why 900 feet? Why 600 feet? I don't know, it's just what he came up with. So it is not a VDOT requirement. And she suggested also, on top of all this, if we go to the clerk's office and look at the plaque, as she recalls, there might have been an entrance already put on that plaque. But you'd have to look under the name of Delft. Mrs. Delft, Mary, and Anderson, okay? So there, an entrance might be already there, which would trump everything. But anyhow, the issue regarding the entrance i- is not before us tonight. However, I really do appreciate the way Mr. Webb informs applicants of possible hurdles they might encounter should this board take an action on something. So I appreciate you doing that with these folks and all folks, because it's, it's absolutely necessary, and it puts the whole county in a good light. The seven accidents that you reported coming out of Prince Michelle, was that coming or going? That's just rhetorical. And one more thing, the Route 29 corridor study that has been upgraded since, since this lot was created and since this 900 and 600 feet, you know, we have, we have created, you know, Route 29 is our business corridor. So in my opinion, it ought to be up to VDOT whether something is safe or not. I would entertain, or I could entertain a discussion on removing the language altogether and just put in there that VDOT ought to be the final say, because they are the professionals. But you know, that's, that's for a later date.
Would it be something, would it be something we'd want to add this to our, an agenda moving forward? Maybe our second meeting in January, just for discussion purposes?
If I may, if I'm hearing this, we want to talk again, the ordinance to, to remove the number of, sometimes just put.
I would, I would think that, I would think that it would just be a discussion item. It would not be a public hearing, discussion item amongst the Board, moving towards the potential of recommending the Planning Commission to study something.
That's right. So on Tuesday particularly, you can look at this and make some decision on direction.
We've already, we've already advertised to GOL and trial in the second meeting in January.
Well, you said, I mean, far as discussion.
Oh, yeah.
You want to discuss this Tuesday or at your second meeting?
Second meeting.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody? All right, other comments on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicants, please, brief question. Mr. and Mrs. Nawabi, have any of the adjacent property owners expressed any concerns or comments with regard to your activity, your proposed business activity?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for coming to the microphone. Oh, that is the right tone to set. All right, other comments from Board? What would y'all like to do here?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RZ dash 01 dash 22 dash two as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Now, you, now you don't have to stay till the end of it. Case number RZ dash 01 dash 22 dash three, Madison County Holdings LLC, Paolo Bannon, request rezoned roughly three acres and nine-acre portions of an R1-zone parcel to B1 business and R3 multiple-family residential respectively. If rezoned, the applicant would develop a commercial site on the B1-zoned area in multiple apartment buildings or structures containing no more than 35 individual apartment units on the R3-zoned area. The subject 39-acre property is identified on Madison County tax map as 40 dash 20 and is located on Fishback Road. To date, the parcel does not contain a postal address. Mr. Webb?
Yep, just to clarify that the 21 acres would remain R1, and you know, we are, we have rezoned one portion of this, and these are two other portions that would be rezoned. It's still, as of now, it's one parcel, and you know, just it's split zone. That's not, not uncommon. Otherwise, kind of just reiterate my comments that I think this could be a, kind of set the tone in this Fishback Road, this growth corridor, all with the conversations with RSA moving forward, which I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that report as far as their capacity, because I, I do believe that, you know, again, it's, it's obvious from the comp plan and just way developed with this, this area, I believe that everything being integrated, mixed, connected, walkable, drivable, and all those things, it's something that we can achieve here.
Questions for Mr. Webb? Mr. Bannon, anything to add?
Not unless you have any questions.
Do you think it was your best judgment to sit next to Dennis?
Again, it's quite.
Yeah, that's about right. Questions for Mr. Bannon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few. Mr. Bannon, I'm late to the game on this project, obviously, and trying to get up to speed. There are a few things that, I'm looking at this, and I just want some clarification.
Okay.
Number one, there's this layout that Mr. Legan, that Legan did, I think it looks very nice. Is this, is this what you envisioned, something like this, or something radically different from that?
No, that's correct. I envisioned something like that, yeah.
Okay. With regard to the possible single-family dwellings, they would be on their own septic, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the last issue with the RSA taps and the proposed number of apartments, my biggest concern, and this is a concern that's been relayed to me by other folks, is, is that we, we don't see apartments built there for a certain, a set number of people, a design number of people, and then we end up with more people in there than what was planned, and then we might overload the system. My understanding is, is that the current plant is close to capacity, and, and I have rental properties, and I know that it's amazing how people multiply very quickly sometimes. So that's enough, that's just a concern that I have, and I don't know what, how you would address that, or how you could give a, give me some reassurance and the Board some reassurance that that won't get, be something that gets out of hand.
Well, they're, first of all, they're one-bedroom apartments. So, and we have about 450 apartments altogether, and we keep a pretty good tab on them. So we would, obviously, I don't want a bunch of people in a one-bedroom apartment for several reasons. They'll tear it up, number one, and it's, it's just not a good, good save thing to have. But no, it would be one-bedroom apartments only.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? All right, to the public. To the public. All right, back to the Board. What would y'all like to do here?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we approve case number OA dash, whoops, I'm in the wrong spot, hold on.
The one up?
Yeah, one up, yeah.
RZ.
Yeah, got that wrong, sorry. Case number RZ dash 01 dash 22 dash three.
I second. Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Case number OA dash 01 dash 22 dash four, amending the zoning ordinance specifically adding an Article 20, for principal dwelling is under construction or necessary due to unforeseen emergency or medical hardship. Occupancy may be allowable for up to 24 months, requires adherence to Virginia Department of Health Regulations, and must adhere to Article 15 dash B, temporary housing of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Webb?
Um, I don't really have any, any more to add. I mean, I guess Plan Commission did, not necessarily, but they did approve this. It could be scaled down, but again, I, I don't think it's really, I, I think this works fine.
Questions for Mr. Webb? All right. I guess we'll open it to the public. To the public. Livingston Low. Just me and him on the go-to-meeting deal. Um, all right, back to the Board. What would we like to do here?
I just have one question for Mr. Gregg. In thinking about this during the debate, with regard to someone getting the permit for the RV, and then their house is completed, and now the RV's still sitting there, but if they move out of the RV into their home, isn't the RV now technically no longer their primary residence, and it's just their RV, they can go camping with it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Please.
We ran this through our development committee, which includes VDOT and the Health Department, and we actually asked that scenario about, okay, can they connect, they actually recur to their septic facility if you can connect? It's just as you pointed out, when you go to designate a private residence, which would be your completed home, you would have to disconnect, which would be part of the inspection process. Now I'm about to help the Department of Health.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Mr. Webb. Other questions? Comments, thoughts, motion?
Yeah, this is just the definition one. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve OA dash 01 dash 22 dash four as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Case number OA dash 01 dash 22 dash five, amending the zoning ordinance specifically adding an Article 15 dash B to be listed as temporary housing. The Article 15 dash B, temporary housing will include Articles 15 dash B dash one, temporary emergency housing, 15 dash B dash two, temporary housing during new construction, 15 dash B dash three, medical emergency housing, and 15 dash B dash four, additional regulations and considerations. Each article contains a written description. Mr. Webb?
The only thing I would say, that Chairman Moscow, on Article 15A, that's temporary, I think that's camping, and, and I just proposed to make a 15B, that's totally separate from 15A. So it's, it's a new, and it could be any, you know, it's just a supplemental regulation. I just felt that was the best place to put it in the code. So it's not connected, and Article 15 doesn't necessarily have to be just about campery, you know. As far as the length of it is borrowed from Madison, and I mean, we're not going to tell people if they move into their home, that they got to move their RV, and that's, but it, it does kind of read that way, I guess, if you, if you read it. I don't think Orange enforces that way. If, if it's pleasure of the Board, I don't have any issue with, if you want to have the public hearing, close it and, and table it, I don't have any problem coming back at another meeting with a, and cutting this down to each one maybe two or three sentences, that, that's fine. I think it can be done. It, it's longer than I would prefer, but again, it covers a lot of bases, that's for sure. So I don't have any, I mean, from my perspective in administering it, I don't see any issue with adopting it as it is. But if, if the, you know, if the pleasure of the Board is just to scale it down, I don't have any issue with coming back at another meeting, showing you what it could be, and you could just take it off the table then, if that's at, if that's adequate, you think it's okay, you could prove it then. So it's just an option.
It covers everything, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I don't see that it needs to be short. It's not that long, anyway.
Right, I think it's.
Yeah, I mean, April researched this, vetted it, presented it. I don't have any problem with it like it is.
Okay, yeah.
Gentlemen, don't hold back. Anything you got, please, I'll make it up. The, I, I did want to mention, the Planning Commission didn't recommend this one to us. We do have the authority, I guess, to consider, and I guess we are. Any other questions for Legan? I guess we'll go Mr. Weekly as well, or Mr. Sean Gregg? All right, to the public. To the public. All right, back to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we approve case number A, 0A dash 01 dash 22 dash five. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Case number OA dash 01 dash 22 dash six, amending the Code of Ordinances of Madison County, Virginia, specifically Chapter 4, amusement and entertainment, and deleting Article 2, outdoor musical and entertainment festivals, Section 14 dash 19 through 14, or through, excuse me, Section 4 dash 19 through 4 dash 29. All text in Article 2 and Section 4 dash 19 through 4 dash 29 shall be replaced with the word "reserve." Further, amending the Code of Ordinances of Madison County, Virginia, specifically Chapter 4, amusement and entertainment, and delete amusement and entertainment, and replace the text in Chapter 4 to read "Chapter 4, Large-Scale Outdoor Events." The entire amended Chapter 4, large-scale events, shall consist of an Article 1, general, and Article, and contain a Section 1 through Section 11. Mr. Webb? I do feel like we've talked about this in one way or another for like two years. What do you got?
The start, I think it started in May, so we finally, I, I think it reads, I think to Commissioner Work and the Plan Commission, we've talked about this, I think it's pretty straightforward, pretty simple, and I think it's probably a needed improvement over what's been on the books, 1978, amended 1982. So I think it's a, I appreciate everyone's work on it, and I didn't really do a lot, but listen, so appreciate everyone who worked on it.
Questions on the Board to Mr. Webb or anybody else? To the public. To the public. All right, back to the Board.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 0A dash 01 dash 22 dash six as presented, whereas recommended by the Planning Commission, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Further, amending the code of ordinances of Madison County, Virginia, specifically Chapter four, amusement and entertainment, and delete amusement and entertainment and replace the text in Chapter four to read Chapter four, large-scale outdoor events. The entire amended Chapter four, large-scale events, shall consist of an Article one, general, and Article, and contain a Section one through Section eleven. Mr. Webb? I do feel like we've talked about this in one way or another for like two years. What do you got?
The start, I think it started in May, uh, so, uh, we, we finally, I, I think it reads, I think to Commissioner Work and the planning commission, um, we've talked about this. I think it's pretty straightforward, uh, pretty simple. And I think it's, uh, probably a needed improvement over what's been on the books, nineteen seventy-eight, amended nineteen eighty-two. So, uh, I think it's a, I appreciate everyone's work on it, and I didn't really do a lot, but listen, so appreciate everyone who worked on it.
Questions from the board to Mr. Webb or anybody else? To the public. To the public. All right, back to the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve zero OA dash zero one dash twenty-two dash six as presented where it's recommended by the planning commission. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Case number OA dash oh one dash twenty-two dash seven, amending the zoning ordinance specifically amending Article fourteen dash eighteen, event, venue, and deleting the entire text in the last paragraph of Article fourteen dash eighteen point two, structure and activities to be allowed. The amended portion of Article fourteen dash eighteen point two shall read, large-scale outdoor events that are open to the public are subject to the requirements of the code of ordinances of Madison County, Chapter four of large-scale outdoor events. Mr. Webb?
Yeah, so this is, the music entertainment ordinance is now large-scale outdoor events.
I hope this is the last time we do this.
Maybe in forty years, we can change it.
Yeah, that's fine. I was thinking we're coming around here. All right, questions on the board to anyone? To the public. To the public. Back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve case number OA dash oh one dash twenty-two dash seven as recommended by the planning commission. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all. Um, anything we need to discuss this evening?
You just want me to give you brief information?
Yeah, brief information.
As you all, the governor has finally declared a state of emergency. As you know, you all at the board declare the local emergency, state emergency allows resources, such as National Guard, things like that, that is the latest news, I guess, considering the pandemic. We are just under twenty-seven percent of our county still without power. We had daily updates from the community and RAC, letting us know of the progress. So that looks to go through the weekend, and we have another few for us. Shelter was put up, uh, and still up and going for those who need. Do not bring in charcoal grills and things you have, we're about to end it after. Do not do that. If you need heat, please use a lot of the shelter equipment. DSS staff.
Any questions? We do have, uh, one more public comment. Public comment. I think this is the last time the board will have Mr. Moscow as chairman. Thank you for your service over the years. We appreciate it. Done a good job with the planning commission. No, you. Thank you. Um, what's pleasure of the board?
No, Joe John.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all.
Let's stay.
He's with the rest of us.
This conference is no longer being recorded.